All right, well, bear with me. This should be a little bumpy. It's my first time driving.
It'll be fun.
All right. I'm going to call tonight's school committee meeting to order. Time is now 6:35. Looks like we had a roll call for who was here last time. Could you call and roll, please?
Absolutely. I'm Mr. Durham.
I'm here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
And Mr. Bump.
Here.
Ms. Bartos is on the way. She should be just a little tardy. All right. Moving into the consent agenda. We're going to have a vote on the minutes for January 7th. Has everybody had some time to review the minutes?
I was just asking Ginny if this gives us a quorum.
Three does.
Okay.
Yes, I have.
I believe she has.
Could you give the roll of the class?
My Mary Poppins hat.
Go, electrons.
Yes.
I have one very close to it.
We're just talking about minutes.
Okay.
So, we're, the meeting is live and we're just...
Well, everyone wants to see me in my Mary Poppins hat.
Has everybody had some time to review the minutes? Whenever anyone feels comfortable, somebody can make a motion. We'll entertain it.
To accept or approve? Approved?
To approve.
So...
Second?
Second.
Was it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is good practice for a new guy. All right, I'm going to move on to vote on warrants. Warrants number 43 and 44 have gone around for signature. I'll make a motion to put in warrants 43 and 44.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, visitor comments at this time. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you formally state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. Any visitors who'd like to speak at this time? Okay. Moving right along to student representative. I understand that he's absent tonight.
Yes, he is absent this evening. So, I'll report out to the students' report.
Okay.
During the superintendent's report.
Great. And we'll move right on to new business. Class of 2025 field trip out of state.
They were contemplating two field trips, but Pet Cole is not here, so they were going to shore that up and talk about it today for the senior class trip, but he's not here, so we'll have to move that to Thanksgiving.
Okay, so we'll reschedule our next meeting.
Sure.
Uh, moving on to continuing business. School choice enrollment dashboard.
The enrollment dashboard has not changed. We are holding steady at 678 since October, so that's where we are. Haven't moved.
Next piece of business will be the school calendar. I understand that there's three versions now?
There's three versions to calendar in here. The original, we had two, A and B, or one and two, and then the third calendar was with the information we got from RGEA representatives, so I guess the discussion on that.
Okay.
And they're in the folder. I think they're labeled one and two, and proposal one, two, is the last one, three, Ginny?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, take them in or tutor review, and then any comments, please feel free to speak up.
I listened to the discussion last time, and I'm the new guy, so I'm going to follow the lead of what everybody else thinks is best here.
Although new means a unique perspective. You might see things differently than we have, so it could be a fresh view.
Oh, I see a lot of things differently, but, but I need to learn Granby.
That's a loaded statement.
I need to learn Granby, and, and so I think that in terms of the calendar, you all probably have more insight into what will work better in the district than I do at this point. Is that fair enough?
Fair enough.
I just wanted to see the timeline.
It really was just a change in some of the days before the, like, the Thanksgiving break and the winter break, right?
More or less. I was busy with taking proposal one and then making some adjustments based on some teacher practices and all those things like that.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably the only one that lines up pretty well as far as the Juneteenth and not going past it.
Excuse me.
So, which, let's go through them one by one? Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Is there anything I haven't read back?
Absolutely. Please take it back. It's all yours.
Um, let's go through them one by one, if you guys don't mind. Yeah, I'm having... Is Esther here?
Nope, he's off today.
I'm having trouble opening any of my stuff, so I'm going to follow along with Mary Jane. But if we go to version one...
All right.
So, this one is, school would start on August 27th after professional development day starting, or, I'm sorry, new teacher induction is August 21st and 22nd, which is a Thursday and Friday. Professional development is for all teachers, which would be Monday and Tuesday, with the first day of school being on Wednesday, August 27th. And then we'd have, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then going into the long weekend, Monday would be off, and then September 2nd, everyone would come back to school, including pre-K and kindergarten. And then October, have October 13th off for Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is the old Columbus Day. November 11th would be Veterans' Day. Then this one is November 26th through 28th, which is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, no school, all three days. So, it's really around these, the holiday breaks, that is the biggest difference. Then December, December 24th through 31st, so there would be a full day of school on December 23rd, and then Christmas Eve until January 6th, they'd be off, then Martin Luther King Day on January 19th. February, April, uh, February vacation would be the 16th through the 20th. Did you all like that? February, April vacation?
Return would be January 5th, not the 6th, right, on version one?
Um, oh, I stand corrected, yes. I saw the orange and was reading it as red. February vacation, 16th through the 20th. March, no school on the 18th for Curriculum Day. April, the 3rd would be Good Friday, no school. Then April vacation, the 20th to the 24th, legitimate April vacation, not in February. Then Memorial Day on May 25th, and then the last day of school in June would be June 12th, assuming no snow days. And then June 22nd would be the last day if all five snow days were used, and we would have Juneteenth, which is June 19th, off. So, that's version one. Questions or comments on version one?
None from me.
Version two. This one is, new teacher induction is August 19th and 20th. Professional development is 21st and 22nd. First day of school would be August 25th. August 29th would be no school. September 1st for Labor Day would be no school. Everyone would return back on September 2nd. Again, October 13th off. November, Veterans' Day, no school, which is the 11th. Thanksgiving holiday is the 26th through the 28th, which is the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. December 24th through the 31st off, again, full day of school on the 23rd. They would come back on January 5th, Martin Luther King Day on the 19th. February, same vacation, 16 to 20. March 18th is still Curriculum Day. April, the Good Friday is off. April vacation, no change. May, no change. And then June, last day of school would be June 11th if no snow days. If we do have all five snow days, the last day of school would be June 18th, so that avoids the June 19th holiday. We would be done before that. Questions or comments on that one? All right, hearing none. Moving on to proposal three. All right, for this one, August 21st and 22nd would be new teacher induction, which is the Thursday and Friday. Professional development, Monday and Tuesday. First day of school would be on Wednesday, the 27th. No school on Labor Day. Everyone returns to school on the 2nd, including kindergarten and pre-K. October is the same. November is slightly different. Veterans' Day would be off, and the 26th, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, would be a half-day, and the Thanksgiving holiday would be only the Thursday and the Friday. In December, half-day of school on the 23rd. The holiday would be the 24th through the, oops, where did January go? Okay, 4th through the 5th, that stays the same. Martin Luther King Day. February is the same with February vacation. March is the same. April is the same. Good Friday off. May is the same. June, June 11th would be the last day of school. Last day would be June 18th if we used all five snow days, again, avoiding June 19th. Discussion. Anybody?
Just want to clarify, Jen, this is the version with the GEA input.
Yep.
Yeah, and they're choosing a half a day, both before Thanksgiving and before the Christmas break.
Actually, I think that some of that was my thought on how to use that, but I can't actually remember.
I think they were similar, similarly, the survey.
The survey.
And it gets everyone, again, presuming fewer than five snow days, or five or fewer snow days, not requiring students to come back for one day on the 22nd of June. Probably won't happen by and large, anyway.
Right. Which is why we were, um, why we were tossing this third version around and putting some of their thoughts into what it would look like if we maintained the instructional hours, which I'm assuming this does?
Yep. I double-checked that. My bigger concern was the elementary school and we're absolutely fine.
Okay. All with all three versions, obviously?
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's hear it from you guys. What do you got?
This feels like a traditional school calendar to me. I'm okay with three.
Yeah, three is my, I guess, preferred out of them. It does include input from the union, and it has a little bit of a later start and ends before the 19th, which was part of the highlights of the other two options. And then the half-days for the holidays.
Kristen, if you mind?
Hi, I'm Kristen Nagleary. I'm the secretary of the GEA.
And we've been inviting her to sit with us while we have these discussions, because she's been sort of the voice of the union for us. So, does this version, as you've seen it for three, encapsulate what you guys were talking about?
Absolutely. With all the surveys that we've sent out to our membership, the majority, Ginny was able to take on your request and put it into a calendar, and we explained to staff that you guys are going to be looking at the three tonight, and you'll be voting on one of them.
Excellent. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that it had gotten out there like we had talked about.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we try to text or email right away.
Awesome.
Yeah.
All right, any, any discussion? Further discussion?
I feel like we should talk about this for over an hour.
Do we get a...
I think version three is fine. I'm like-minded with everybody else here.
Excellent. Well, with that, I will take the motion.
Make a motion to accept proposal number three, Granby School Public School Calendar, school year 25-26.
Have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's great. Thank you. They'll be happy to hear.
Thanks for your input. Maybe we could do, just, do the calendars traditionally go to the union early on in the process?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we've just, over the past couple of years, we've been taking more and more sort of input.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So, next is our CES representative. I actually forgot where we were.
Well, I know you asked me to look into the meeting schedule, so I talked to Todd Gazda at the Collaborative, so I just kind of cut, pasted his email. So, he put down the dates of the CES meetings, and he said they have the option to participate remotely if, if somebody so chooses. Typically, they are in person, but that is an option for, for some folks when they can't make it. So, so the remaining dates are January 29th, March 26th, May 28th, and June 25th. So, those are the dates. It is in your folder. I just put that in there. You can take a look at that, so I did my homework.
So, Jen, I did look at the dates in terms of how they fit into my calendar. I don't know if everybody knows, but a good part of my job is going out in the evenings to work with school committees. Some of the dates work for me, and some of them just don't, and that's considering that right now I'm scheduling with people out into the latter part of March. The calendar, the calendar fills up. It's interesting work, and I'd like to tell you I could commit to it, but it, it would be a heavy load for me.
Okay.
Is something I can share, I'm thinking?
Yeah, I guess we'll probably have to see if, if it can be, as long as there's a representative from Granby going, if we can divide and conquer.
Sure.
And maybe that way, at least until, you know, we, we could kind of rotate through and have some exposure. With the remote availability, that kind of...
Where, where is the in-person meeting located at?
I think it's North Hampton.
North Hampton.
It's in North Hampton?
Yeah. This will tell you how old I am by street behind where the old Jack August lived.
Okay.
I'm the only one who remembers Jack August, probably.
I wonder how the parking is, over there?
There's a parking lot.
They have it on Park and Hampton.
Nice.
And I will, I guess, add to that in the future, with the hope of some of my hours changing, I could do it more rather than less, but at the moment, it's tough.
Well, do you all want to try the divide and conquer strategy? Can I get a volunteer for the 29th?
That's one of the few I could actually make. I'd put it in my calendar, because I thought, oh, wow, look, first date I'm looking at, I'm good as gold. Wasn't quite as good after that, but...
All right, so 129, Liz can attend. March 26th is a Wednesday? I don't have anything at that point.
That's a buzz over.
That's a buzz over, but Sockel starts.
It's still pre-season.
Right. They probably, I don't actually, both place, I'll look and see, because I know they, partial agenda, uh, it's not an agenda when it's, what's that other thing called a schedule?
I think they start that one day for practices for preseason.
Yeah, the first game is April 3rd, so, so I could do the March 26th one.
I could take the May one.
Okay.
Congratulations. You're March 26th.
I can full-flop with you if you want to. It makes no difference. Okay.
And they weren't thinking that anybody attended the morning meetings that they posted on their website?
I asked about that. That's just for the board, their board.
Good.
I specifically asked that question, because I, I need to clarify. I said, well, there's two meetings, and you can go to the morning, they're different meetings.
Okay.
One is for the CES actual board, I don't know, which would be, I think, me, as a representative.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
All right, so January 29th will be Liz. March 26th will be me. May 28th will be Mike, and June 25th will be George. Is that correct? Does everyone remembers it?
Sounds good.
Okay. So, I'll have to see about getting the, the location and/or...
I can do all that for you. I'll send the location.
What time do they usually start?
It says 6:00 to 8:30.
Oh, perfect. I can just leave work, because it's right there, so, okay.
And I will get the address to you.
It's like a call from the old days, because they provide food, too.
Okay.
But I'm definitely going to...
I served, uh, I served on the board when I was in Hatfield.
That's good. Okay. Dun and dun.
Haway Street. It's H-A-W-E-Y Street.
Okay. Okay.
We'll go later, I'm thinking.
All right, moving, so we don't need to vote on that, because we're going to, there's not going to be one person. We're dividing and conquering. Moving on, school committee member for Superintendent's Search Committee. Do we have, do we get a bunch of people for...
That would be Ginny. I don't have any relation.
Did the board...
Yes, they're down, down somewhere. Ginny has a group of people that apply. I haven't been getting their correspondence.
Okay.
I have posted out to interested parties until February 3rd. It's going out on Blackboard. It's on the town website. It's everything. So, they have until February 3rd to say if they're interested. Someday, we'll pick.
Yeah, you're getting, you're getting applications up, or names, not applications.
Yeah, names, yes. I think I have, I mean, I could probably look. I think I have probably fifteen.
Oh, nice. Okay, great.
Not a lot of representation from the junior, senior high school, from the staff. A lot from East Meadow. There's maybe four or five parents, there's two committee, community members. So, there's going to be another Blackboard net going out next week on Wednesday. As kind of like a final blast to text messages to families.
Excellent. Okay. Who would like to be on the Superintendent's Search Committee? Anybody? Anybody?
Not particularly.
Oh, it's such exciting work. Spent two weeks down at the Cape trying to cover two searches happening down there, just because there's, there's a lot going on, but I would be the first one to raise my hand there, because I actually do enjoy that work. My boss told me that I should stay away from the search committee, but that I would be, as long as I, I don't have, I don't have a horse in the race, so I could vote as a school committee member.
Okay, great.
But because of the work I do with superintendent searches and possibly seeing other candidates in that initial process, he advised me to stay away.
I totally get that. I was thinking that that was probably going to be the situation.
It seems like a lot of work, but it's a lot of work in a short timeframe, which is what I always tell committees. It's usually between a week and two weeks of dates that you plot out for screening and interviewing. You select the finalists, and really, your job is done. I'm a school committee nerd, I guess.
Um, I don't know if I, can I sit on the search committee as the chair? Because I, all right, I'll do it then, if everyone's okay with it.
I appreciate it.
Sure, I need a motion.
I'd make a motion to make our chair, Jen Bartos.
Dopes.
Bartos. Our representative on the Superintendent's Search Committee.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Here we go. All right, back to the Superintendent's Search brochure. Any updates, questions, comments on where we have it? I still like it. I just want to make sure that we're, we're happy with it, so that we can get it, get it out there, because tomorrow will be, I guess, yeah, tomorrow, so it can be posted tomorrow.
That's not in our file, right?
It should be.
And...
It's the third in the folder, please, Superintendent, with a Ramsen in the upper left corner.
The only changes I made to this were the dates. Instead of having one date for the interviews, I changed it to 17th to the 21st, for instance. So, that was really the only change that I made.
Excellent.
I think, did you change the site visit thing, too?
Yeah, it was with a range of dates, because I had the site visits on one certain date instead of it in a range of a week. So, that was, I changed it to ranges within that.
Did very nice job. I think I have one question. When we talk about the salary being negotiable, that's a true statement, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a...
I, within the parameters that we, that exist.
Somebody could come in and ask for $400,000.
I get that.
I would have a very hard time keeping a straight face, but we would certainly, certainly have a negotiation with them.
Totally get that. Thank you.
I can't even say that with a straight face.
You could ask that.
I don't know. But, yeah, within the confines of...
Mm-hmm.
And so far, we've had fairly good luck. It may not, sometimes it's not always standard, you know? Like, we might have to figure out ways to make stuff work.
Yes.
Okay, if we're all set, I'll take the motion to approve the brochure and post it for tomorrow.
So, moved.
Second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, so now we have subcommittees. We've got policy and budget. It is 7:04. How long, George, do you think you guys need for policy?
Uh...
Half hour, maybe?
Yeah, better. It should be fine.
Okay. Is that going to be good for us for budget?
More than enough.
All right. So, we will reconvene in 30 minutes?
I think it's 14.
Okay. And we're back. Policy, can we get a report out, please?
Um, so we just went through basically updates and changes, which Liz had gone through wonderfully beforehand. Uh, the majority of the items are just bringing it to current like language, things like that. We will have to, uh, discuss for one of the subsections, which also affects the second section, um...
D G A.
That, yes, the D G A with, as far as.
Authorized signatures.
We can now designate a single individual or continue as we are as a group. And so I guess that's a discussion we can have at the next meeting for the second, for second group.
Okay, perfect.
And I'll talk to you, Ginny, tomorrow. I'd put a separate file in.
Oh, okay.
I do this stuff in my sleep. I do so much policy work, so it's second nature. Yes.
Okay, and for budget?
For budget, uh, we discussed the distribution of the cherry sheet from Desi, uh, for the, uh, chapter seventy money and a couple of the other mainstays of our budget and, um, how we were going to coordinate with the town in terms of doing our projections hand in hand and a couple of the key dates, uh, based on past events of when that would occur. Uh, we also had discussion about the increasing inflation and elastic goods and services eating away at our discretionary funds. And, um, we had a short discussion about, uh, some creative ways to potentially overcome that in terms of purchasing, but we won't know until we get a little bit deeper in the process. So right now, we're in the initial stages. As soon as the initial projections are distributed, we'll have a better idea. Uh, but the ball is rolling in the right direction.
All right, standing reports. Mary Jane?
Okay. Um, I just wanted to let you know that our Granby Public Schools app has been updated thanks to Ginny. She has been really diligent in looking at the website and, uh, getting our app up to speed. So on the web app, if you're not familiar with our app, you can access our news, events, uh, menus for schools. You can also, uh, look at the apps and tardy dismissal form for each school, the athletic schedule and everything GPS related. This app is available at app, uh, at your, uh, at Google app and, and the Apple Play Store. Just search for Granby Rams. Um, one really good feature I like is that you can actually, um, report your student's absence through the app. So that's a really nice feature that, that we have. And, uh, the school principals have, um, put it into their newsletters. So it's a great feature for folks to, to use, so, um...
Can you get the plus portals from there?
Pardon?
Can you get the plus portal?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
She's, I'm sure she's going to find out when we leave here. Tomorrow, Ginny's going to be out.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at it right now. I'm allowing notifications in this place.
No, it doesn't look like you can get plus portals.
Well, that will be the next best, next thing to try to add because then you can go to everything at once. Because both schools are using plus portals now, right?
Uh, I don't know.
For like grades and stuff?
Uh, please.
I don't know.
Sometimes the...
They're not using the Google classroom anymore.
I didn't think so, but I, I could be wrong.
I don't know what it's called. I just go to...
Yeah. I don't know, mine aren't for you. I'll, I really don't know the answer to that. For some reason, I'm saying no, but it may, it just may not be consistent across the teachers is what I have to find out. Okay, the next one is I met with Marie McCourt. She is our liaison with the Collaborative to discuss summer programming for our families. Last summer, we provided both extended school year, which we are required by law to, to provide, and enrichment. But unfortunately, the enrichment program, um, was not as well attended, um, as a district. So we really, um, really had to, um, incur some of the costs with our own budget. So this year, the Collaborative has decided to work with us through our, uh, Twenty-First Century Grant to, um, offer free summer, um, enrichment programs to our families. And right now, it's going to be a four-week program from July seventh to August first. I am working with Marie and, and the evening school director to, um, determine what we're going to do for those, those four weeks. I think we're going to make, um, week-based STEM, um, programs that talk about, um, that, that discuss, um, activity-based, um, you know, looking for some field trips for the students and things like that. So, um, and we'll be free to charge for students in K through six and we will be, um, giving you information as we get it. We're meeting the beginning of February and hopefully we'll have something to the families by February vacation so they can plan accordingly for the summer. So I actually contracted with New England School Development Council to help with our future enrollment data and I sent you all the copy of that. Um, you'll find a copy in your folder. But there's some highlights, so I just wanted to let you know that this, um, data includes national and state and, um, New England, uh, data. So you can take a look at it from twenty to, just to say that the population and pre-K enrollment across the country and across the state are declining. Um, because it's not increasing. However, um, you know, data for Granby for the next, you know, ten years or eight years is showing that we're a little bit, at a little bit lower decrease rate than some of the other areas. So that's a good report to take a look at. They also provide lots of services for us, so I thought we'd get a lot of bank hard luck if we use them to help us with some of those projections in the future. So take a look at that and you can bring it forward, but I, I thought it was a great, um, resource for us. WEDA testing will take place for our E L students. Um, actually, the window opens, I haven't worn a, um, t-shirt until next week. WEDA, I just want to explain what WEDA is. WEDA is a testing, is a series of English language proficiency assessments for students in grade, um, K through twelve. Um, and it's, WEDA means world-class instructional design assessment because somebody might ask me what WEDA is. So I thought I'd have that out for you all.
Uh huh.
Um, currently, we have about twenty-nine E L students, three at the middle and high school level and, uh, remaining twenty-six at East Meadow. And that will help us ascertain what services we need for our students and, and helps establish our teachers and, and those types of things. So I also received notification from the town that our annual report is due February twenty-eighth and our D L T, uh, team will be spending time working on our portion for each of their departments in the, in the next coming weeks and submitted by the deadline. Um, high school updates. Our cotillion was held on Saturday. A hundred and seven of our students attended the event at the Knights of Columbus and Chicagee. I talked to Ally. She said the kids are fabulous. The school resource, uh, the, not the school resource, obviously, the officer on duty was so impressed with our students that he, they were polite and well-mannered. They had a great, great time. And then FAFSA night is, uh, Granby Junior Senior High on the thirtieth and that's going to be at six o'clock in the cafeteria. Midterms were completed today and tomorrow beginning is the beginning of term two. Uh, I just had a message from Lisa. She just wants to remind parents that, you know, I know Marie really loves recess, but with the colder than normal temperatures, we may not have recess every day. And please review your notification from East Meadow. It does give you a little chart of what days we'll be using, you know, that they can go out for recess. And, you know, with students waiting at the bus and you encourage parents to make sure, and it's really hard, I know, as a parent, the kids don't want to wear coats and hats and gloves, but we're really going to have some temperatures in the next couple of weeks. So try to cajole your students into dressing warm. As a parent, we know it's not easy, so that's what I...
Any questions or comments for Mary Jane?
Um, for indoor recess, uh, the kids allowed, especially in elementary, to use the gym, run around a little bit, kind of get their legls out.
There's not a gym class. But mostly, it's usually it's in a classroom or, you know, well, they'll, they'll, you know, put the kids in cohorts. But, you know, if there's not a gym class, it's maybe more, I think, they may, they may do it. Sometimes if there's a gym class, they may do it.
Is, uh, is there a way for the teachers to know?
We, they know in the morning.
Yeah.
With the schedule, so every teacher gets a schedule of, you know, where the classes are every day. But I can specifically check with Lisa to see if there's somewhere we can move that around a little bit.
Yeah, that'd be good. I mean, I mean, for some kids, they might need to run it off a little bit.
Oh, they, some, some of them run it off in the classroom.
Yeah, it's tough. So if they want to bounce around with them, if it's available.
I'm sure if it's available, they do let them. I, I do, I do, I have seen them do it, but oftentimes there may be another class in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's some sensory walks too.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We do have some, you can see if you walk around the building, you do see, um, areas that they do have designated for sensory walks. Sometimes I've seen him going around, you know, I, may not be really recess-based, but let's identify certain things. If you, if you look in the windows, you know, what can you see, bird shapes, things like that with the little, with the, with the littles, I see that a lot. So they try to keep them busy and give them movement breaks during the day as well. Because, you know, and again, as a, as a parent, I had, one of my boys just couldn't sit still at all. So recess is critical for a lot of kids.
Yeah.
But we have to make sure that they, you know, cold air sometimes like for the little ones sometimes.
No, understandable.
Yeah. But there is a chart, so, um, this week doesn't really look too promising, but at the end of the week, it does look like it's going to roll up a little bit. And they do their best they can and usually we talk to the nurse and, and there's, sometimes he may not have a morning recess, but the afternoon may be a recess. So it's, it may not be a full day for some people. You know, maybe cold in the morning over the afternoon.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep. That's all I have.
Um, so as from our subcommittee update, uh, the governor's budget is going to be released this week and then we're going to use that, um, to finish, uh, building our projections to work with the town for our FY twenty-six budget. Um, for the junior senior high school kitchen project, we're finalizing our documents, uh, to put the bid out next week. Um, so hopefully we can get interested parties, uh, to take on that project, uh, so that we can get that kitchen renovated and up and running in the junior senior high school. And lastly, um, last week I met with all the prin- with the principals and all the department heads, uh, to review their budgets, where they stand, um, giving particular attention on grants. Uh, we have a number of, uh, state grants and federal grants and ensuring that we're going to use those in the timeframe, um, that's required in those grants and meeting the goals of those grants. Um, we have, uh, Innovation Career Pathways at the junior senior high school, MYCAP, uh, grant, which is also another post-secondary planning, uh, grant for students at the high school. Um, we have our heat crimes prevention grant that is district-wide impact. Um, so we have a number of things in the works in addition to our title grants. So that's what I have.
Any questions or comments? All right, we don't have, um, we've established C E S, so we'll have somebody attend the January meeting, which is the twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth. And then that'll be Liz. Um, anything else for the agenda for next time? We pushed the class of twenty-twenty-five, uh, field trip with Cole. Um, we'll have... Will you figure it out?
Yep.
Um, anything else that anyone can think of for the agenda for next time? Policy?
Just a policy, do you?
Uh, just, is it a first read or you need to meet again?
Uh, it'll be a first read and we'll have to make a decision on either continuing, like signing warrants as we are or electing an individual.
Okay.
Depending on the, uh, one of that, we can either vote on it then or, uh, take one more read.
All right, so we'll have something, we'll put it with a vote, but we'll, uh, we can have the discussion. We can table it and push it if we need to. Um, anything else? If anything comes up, we can, uh, just let us know. If, and there's no executive session this evening? Excellent. Uh, with that, I will take the motion to adjourn.
Uh, maybe we should adjourn?
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.